Okay, it is seven o'clock, I believe. And so we are going to call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the regular, a regular meeting for the City Council, February 17th. Welcome all, and glad to see you here. Our first order is, I'd like to ask that you join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, and first I'll start with introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. To my left is Councilmember Patricia Thole, Councilmember Mark Vanderlinde, Councilmember Pam Mortenson, Councilmember Bob Christians, and next to Bob is our city engineer, Paul Hornby. To my right here is our city administrator, Mike Barone. Next to him is our finance director, Ryan Grimm. And on his way back to his seat is David Abel, our community development director. And next to him is, sitting in for Ron Beatty this evening, is Sarah Sansala, our attorney. And next to her, sitting in for our, for Paul Falls, our chief, is Mike Kokesh this evening, thank you. And also in our audience, he'll be making a presentation, is Nick Olson, who is our
Associate Planner, thank you.
So we have light agenda. So first, we have persons, first, we're going to approve the agenda. I believe we just have one addition, and it'll be under business item, business items, it'll be 6F, and it'll be online billing payments discussion. We talked about that at our work session, so we're bringing that, bringing that back for final discussion here. Any other additions, changes to the agenda? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
I'll approve, make a motion to approve the agenda, has changed.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda with that change. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So first, we have persons to be heard. We have none, so we will move on to our special presentations. Thank you very much, Mr. Borg, for being with us this evening. This evening, we have a special presentation by the West Tonka School District Superintendent, Mr. Kevin Borg. It's a pleasure to have you here.
It is wonderful to be here. Thank you for the invitation to come before you and to give you an update about our school system. And Minatrista, of course, is represented by several school systems. West Tonka is proud to be one of those. And so, the goal I have here today is just giving you an update about West Tonka, and some things that are going on with the school district, to give you an opportunity of questions that you're hearing to ask me, and then always reinforce the open invitation to say, if there are other questions, please give me a call, and we can talk about anything that's coming before you. Before I get started in my presentation, just want to say a couple things to the council. Really appreciative of your supporting of our school resource officer, and it's very, it's rewarding here to have Sergeant Kokesh here with his history with that position a number of years ago, and we look at where our history here with Minatrista and that program, and the different people that have sat in that seat. But I appreciate that approval by this council, and that going forward. Paul Falls is not here, Chief Falls, but if he was here, just would want to share to all of you that his work with the district is nothing short of exemplary. Really appreciate his engagement, and I think there's a lot that the community sees when some situation comes up, and they know that we're dealing with it. But I don't think people do realize the amount of interaction he has with our staff on how to prepare for things that never do happen, or how to prevent things from happening. And so, one thing I would say about Chief Falls and the staff is they're very proactive, and they very much treat our kids as their community, and really see it their duty to keep them safe. And it's very rewarding for me to work with them, with not asking for their help, but really collaborating, partnering with them, because their motivation is as strong as ours. And so, I want to share that even in his absence, and Sergeant Kokesh, if you don't mind sharing that with him, we really do appreciate your whole department's engagement with us.
Thank you.
When we talk about the West Tonka School Districts, you hear us frequently talk about it with the small school advantage, big school opportunities, real-life success stories. And that's really a true statement of the West Tonka District. I'm going to go through that here today. But as you highlight, and I mentioned, you're served by several school districts, and excellent school districts. And the west metro really has a lot to be proud of, not just with the West Tonka School District, but so many school districts of strong academic success. The one thing that's probably a little bit unique about West Tonka is our size, and the number of opportunities we have for kids, and how they can really engage with multiple things in our school system. We'll go through a little bit of that today. But taking you through some of the points of pride, you've seen for a number of years that we've really performed well with the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. And that's an assessment that probably is the most, the best assessment to compare one district to another, because there's such tight guidelines on how you assess each child, and that you do assess each child. And for 12 consecutive years, West Tonka, from our youngest of students to our oldest of students, they really do great. And so, this is really something I think, I hope you as a council, and we as a school system, can share a lot of pride in our kids, and how they're representing us as a community, and then our staff, of how they're putting in such effort to work with our kids for these results. As you probably remember, both of our primary schools are national blue ribbon schools. That's the highest national award a primary school or middle school, high school could get. And so, for both of them to be recognized under exemplary high performing, and it's just fantastic, and it's very rare to have a district having both of their primaries, all the primaries having that. Our early childhood program is one that also had the highest rating by the Parent Aware Program. Looking at Grandview and Shirley Hills, this was interesting, just came out this year. We're, in our district, we receive Title I funds, and that's based on free and reduced lunch count numbers, and so, lower income. And so, we get this aid, and both our Shirley Hills and Grandview School are the ones that get that aid. Shirley Hills, of all the primary schools that were Title I, they were ranked number one for being a reward school. There are a lot of primary schools in the state that received this funding, and Grandview was number one in middle schools. Really, really impressive. NITCH rated our high school number 10 in the state, number two in academics. This is a comprehensive rating system, and you can click on each one of these, has a little bit different measurement, and how they go about it. Newsweek, you probably saw this come out last year, but the high school was one of only nine to make the national list, but 104th in the nation for high-performing high schools. Now, you think nationwide, obviously, a lot of high schools. Washington Post ranked the high school 23rd, US News World Report ranked them 24th, that's both in the state. And then, these are, you're probably more familiar with, but Zip Realty rated the district as the most, the best schools for the most affordable homes. That's in the nation. Business Week, and this is with Maun, but it's really our community, and so I think together, we can share the excitement of that, where rated as the number one place to raise kids. And so, school system, but community, and how we work together, just really proud. And so, we're not hanging the hat on one data point or one source, but you can see multiple different measurements showing high levels of success, from our earliest of learners to our highest learners. Just, I think, as a community, and as a council, and you've expressed this, and I appreciate that, but we can be so proud of our kids and how they're representing us. Looking at some of the opportunities, a lot of people are becoming more and more familiar with our DECA program. Our DECA program, why a lot of people are familiar with them, is, A, they really engage with the community. So if it's with our Gillespie Center, if there's the business, our businesses here in the West Tonka area, if it's just individual projects of need. But we had 105 students that qualified for state, and that's 16 percent of our student body. One thing that's exciting that's happening is there is a hole to be part of these activities. As a parent, you don't have to push when they get there. This is like taking a whole additional course. It's a marketing entrepreneurial program, where they have to prepare a 30-page paper, they have to do presentations, they got to collaborate. So, a lot of extensive work, that they're signing up saying, "I want to do this." Now, and you can think of yourself in high school, or maybe your own high school kids, that wasn't always the case, to say, "Boy, I'd love to sign up for an activity where I'd have to write a 30-page paper and give presentations with it." But that's really the pull. So, those 105 made state, 16 percent. But if, one thing that's also remarkable with this is, we have about 20 students that go to internationals. And so, that's 3 percent of our student body. And when we talk about the small school advantage, we really look at, if you take some of our neighbors to the east, they also might have 100 students that make state, but that's 3 percent of their student body versus 16 percent of their student body. So the engagement of the number of kids that are participating in multiple things is something that we can really celebrate, that our kids are getting involved. Just share with you, finance, a couple slides on our finances. Again, we hold a strong fund balance that's been built up over the last couple of years. We continue to demonstrate that we have the lowest tax rate of school districts in Hennepin County. We receive such awards as the School Finance Award through the Department of Education. And this is back to 2012, the last time we went out with our bonds, but at that time, we were one of, there was only 10 districts that had a higher credit rating than the West Tonka District in the state of Minnesota. So, in a strong financial position. This is a chart that you'll see sometimes when we do our levy or bond presentations to the community of just how did these compare to the different districts in the Hennepin County. One thing, an update for you that's probably new, is some of the innovations that's happening in our school district. And with this, I'm going to start off with what we call Edge 21, and David, thanks for clicking on that, so if we can just play that quick. This is a short video, two-minute video.
What do you have to do with your picture? It gets them excited about it. It's phenomenal, the future is exciting. We developed a three-year technology plan called Edge 21. It was created through a thorough process. Also, this is the other school district, and then input for Mark to do, and the classroom doesn't stop. It's a world. And it's all at our fingertips, thanks to things like iPads, and smart boards, and everything technology-wise.
The plan has three primary goals. The first goal is to make sure that we're supporting our school improvement model, providing interventions, enrichment opportunities for students that are personalized to student needs through the use of technology. The second goal is support the transfer from print to digital curriculum. And the third goal of the plan is to support our students' mastery of 21st century skills. We talk about skills such as critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, collaboration, skills that we know that students need to be successful in their future careers.
A few years ago, when we started with iPads, the kids didn't know how to turn them on. They would look at them as a foreign thing. Now, when they're coming in, I don't have to go through those lessons on how to hold an iPad, or how to turn it on, or use the magic button. They all know how to do that.
We decided that the iPad would be the best piece of technology at the K-4 level, and a Chromebook at the grades five through 12.
And I think the main thing is the efficiency of the classroom. It used to be for a typical math lesson. We'd be together for 40 minutes, and you'd be going through it together, and you would be losing kids. You wouldn't have their attention the whole time. Where now, I might start with a 10-minute introduction, five minutes, and off we go to our separate places. They're working at their own pace, and everybody's engaged.
The technology allows for really real-time feedback of student learning, which we think is very powerful for increasing student achievement. This whole Edge 21 plan is about making sure that our kids are college and career-ready. We're very intentional with our work. We're very intentional about thinking about what the experiences, opportunities are needed for our students by the time they graduate, so they're successful after high school. That really is our driving factor for Edge 21.
Plus seven equals nine.
So as you saw in that, we really have a two-platform for our primaries. We are going ahead with iPads, and for our secondary 512, the Chromebook. We are in the, next year, starting the third phase of that, so all students, grades five through 12, will have a Chromebook. There's really two key pieces with this. One, it's not about the technology, it's not the device. Of course, right when a student gets it, it is, because it's different. But one, it allows us really to work with that child at their own learning ability, and to connect with their interests. The second piece of it, as Mark alluded to in this, is we're really taking a shift. Of course, knowledge is always going to be important, but how you apply that knowledge right now is even more important. And so, critical thinking, problem-solving, collaboration, communication skills. And you look at your work, you're doing it through technology, not in the absence of it. Having those devices for our kids, providing them the flexibility for their learning, but applying 21st century skills, we're really excited about some of the innovations that are taking place at our level. Just this last board meeting, we had a group of students, and I'll share the story quick. Sue Simonsen, one of our DECA teachers, also in our business department, presented, presented a group of students that their class is fixing our Chromebooks, so when they do break, putting in a new LCD panel, putting in a spine, putting in a new motherboard. These kids, not only do it, but they're waiting for work. They're waiting for more to come in. Now, we're not encouraging students to give them more business and break them, but they, it is, these kids are so engaged, and their learning is at such an applied high level, that we went in there to take a tour. They can take an LCD screen, put it in, and hand it back to you in about 15, 20 minutes. They're just that quick of popping them out, putting them in. Before, what we had to do is send them to a place where it goes through our insurance. We might not get them back for four weeks. Now, our child can get, break it, bring it in, and next day, get it back. And so, their learning is not slowing down, and almost, they have that turnaround for about 80 percent of their projects. And so, it's a lot more efficient, it's a great learning for our kids, it's costing less money, and it's really fun to see. When you think about that class being offered a few years ago, you just wanted to guess it. Now, it's really relevant. Taking a look at, also, our engineering program, and I would encourage you, if you ever want to visit of our, one of our schools, please give me a call. We'd love to take you around. I know some of you have taken us up, and we appreciate that. But going to our, our high school, one thing you should check out is the growth of the engineering program. And we just recently, probably saw this in The Laker, but we had our engineering regatta. This was a lot of fun. These students had one roll of duct tape and cardboard, and what they had to do with their partner is pull themselves, the paddle, to one side of the pool and back. And you first think, and it can't be wax cardboard. And so, you think of one roll of duct tape, that doesn't go too far, but it was a great way of them showing some of the ingenuity that they have with this program. About, I think it was over 90 percent of the students that were in our high-level course received college credit also. So there's a lot of rigor to this, besides it just connecting with an engineering name. Really appreciative of our community's support. In 2011, they passed two 15-year maintenance bonds, and just wanted to show you a few pictures. If you look at the top left and the top right, Sergeant Kokesh will enjoy this, the high school's changed here a little bit from the locker room and the, but you look at, at the top left there, that was where a wall of the locker room, and we're able to work with some of the space of pulling the weight room facility out of two closets into a space really designed for a weight room. And the response has been fantastic. We've had more students participating, our numbers have increased, and their performance has improved. And so, appreciative of that. Also, we changed our locker rooms, and so now, they're Title IX compliant, and pleased with the outcome of those. I hear you're looking at Grandview's cafeteria, or we call it a cafatorium, as it's used as an auditorium and a cafeteria. And up on top, you can see what it was before. The new windows really adds fantastic light, and just a whole new, not only being more energy-efficient, but that we have a much better learning space. You can see the pool deck, the lighting, the painting, that from the top and the bottom change. And so, most of these projects were a new roof, new mechanical system. Things that I'm not going to show you in these slides, they don't necessarily show that all.
Thank you.
But those are a few of the items that took place. And then, lastly, here in 2014, thankful of our community's support of these two questions, and one, allowing our continuation with our technology funds. And so, I would just share, and capping this up, one, we're really proud of our kids, we're proud of our staff, we're proud of how they're representing the community, and we're really excited about our future. There's a lot of momentum right now in the West Tonka District. And we are just one piece, we know, that serves the Minatrista area, but we're a big piece of it. And so, I think you should feel proud of how the kids are representing us. We definitely are. And open up to questions that you might have about our program, and if you'd like to ever arrange a tour, we'd be happy to arrange and take you through programs that you'd like to see. So, open up to questions you might have.
Well, first of all, again, thank you for coming, and this is exciting. I think anytime our community, and of course, the high school, and the middle school, elementary school, Hilltop, are actually in Minatrista, so we're very excited about the opportunities for, for the people in our community, and, and for the wonderful work that you and your staff and your board have been doing, it's just, it's paid off. So, great work, and thank you very much. I don't have any questions, but any questions?
I have a comment I'd like to make. I've had the opportunity to, actually, there were three of your DECA students that had the opportunity that came over to my house. They were going on, I believe it's the national competition they went on. And I am so impressed, I was so impressed with them, because I took the time, since they came over to the house, they were fundraising, and I took the time to really put them on the spot, because I thought I was pretty sharp on social media. They made me feel really old and outdated. And Sue Simonsen, who works with the DECA program, I'm impressed, very impressed.
Thanks, we'll pass that on.
Yeah.
I think both Mrs. Lolich, who is our DECA president, or our DECA advisor, and then Sue Simonsen, just put in so much effort to help these kids, and it's, again, applied learning.
The three that were at my house were amazing, very impressed.
Thank you.
So if there's anything else that we can ever partner with, work together on, collaborate on, if you need us for whatever needs you may have, we, please, talk to us.
That's a very generous thing, and I'm sure we will, as we both are serving the same purpose.
Exactly.
Thank you for that, and really appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, we don't have, oh, consent agenda items. So we have consent agenda items, consisting of approving our special meeting minutes from February 2nd, approving our regular meeting minutes from February 2nd, a resolution to close out the Roundabout Capital Project Fund to Roundabout Debt Fund, and a resolution to close the Kings Point Road Capital Project Fund to Kings Point Road Debt Fund. One, before we approve the consent agenda item, I just have one minor little correction to the minutes. It did state 334,000 for the equipment certificates. It should state 331,000, not 334. If we could make that correction, I won't have to pull it from the consent agenda.
We will make that correction, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we move on to our business items. We have a resolution accepting the master plan for the Gillespie Park. It says here, "Park," but I know it's park. At 1420 Westwood Drive. Mr. Olson, I believe you will do the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, in his will, Bill Gillespie donated his house and land to the city, with the condition that it would become a public park and used for park purposes. In December of 2013, the city accepted that donation, and started work on becoming, making that a park. Over the summer, 2014, particularly in August, the city had all the structures that were on the property demolished, and any hazardous materials were taken care of in the proper manner. In October of 2014, the city had a full land survey done of the property, to know exactly what we had, and to help provide, you know, a base map for this plan that we were going to create. In January of 20, or January 13 of 2013, just last month, we held our first neighborhood meeting, which was with residents that were within 500 feet of his property. And, you know, we had lots of discussion there, and a lot of good discussion. And then, February 10 of 2015, we had the second neighborhood meeting, and at that meeting, the Parks Commission recommended approval of the master plan for Gillespie Park. And here is what we came up with through those two meetings. Some of the main concerns, mostly of neighbors, was privacy, was of parking, and how much traffic was this going to generate, and how are we going to encourage or discourage driving into this park, and maybe utilizing other methods, such as walking and biking and things like that. So what we came up with, we decided to extend the buffers both along the north and the south. At this time, we're not quite sure what vegetation we will use, that's something we're going to work with the neighbors, is they will be the ones that will have to see it on a daily basis. Along Westwood Drive, in front of the park, we decided to go ahead and institute two no parking signs, the no parking between signs, so no one will be able to park in front of the park. And that was our way to try to discourage people from driving in, something that we think we can do on a trial basis, and the Parks Commission's already stated that's something they would like to, to review at a later date. In the middle there, that big orange dot, that's our location for any future play structures that we will determine, again, with the Parks Commission, based on how people utilize the park, how they're going to utilize the space, what would be good there. But what we did to come up with was to bring a couple of benches, someplace that if your parents or grandparents are bringing their kids to the park, they'll have a place to sit down while their kids are able to utilize the park, and the open space that it will provide. We did notice that through the land survey, that the neighbor to the south had landscaping that's actually on city property. So one of the conditions of the resolution is that that neighbor enter into a license agreement with the city of Minatrista, that in the event that the city deems that that landscaping is not suitable, or not needed, they'll have the right then to take it out and remove it to, to do whatever they just left aside at that point. As you'll notice, the driveway that we left there, the chance for parking, has been removed. That was, you know, through many discussions, that was the desire, that we don't want to encourage onsite parking. There are some lie locks that have been omitted on this survey there along Westwood Drive. The neighbors that across the street, and staff, kind of felt that that provided a safety, safety issue, and that it was, you know, people wouldn't be able to see into the park if any, anything that was going wrong was down there. There was also a big tree that was by his cabin or guest house, that was kind of dying and rot, and branches had fallen down many times. And the city, you know, we decided that, you know, the neighbors had brought that idea up, that we should take it down, to prevent any safety concerns in the future, because it's a tree that's really kind of on its last liking, we'll get rid of it while we're in there doing the, the drive-in, removing the site for final grade. One thing you will notice is that we have decided to leave out a dock at this time, based on the neighborhood concerns. It would provide a safety issue for the city, you know, who would be out there to, to monitor people on the dock? And you'd have to build a dock, specific requirements, to make it a commercial dock, and that can be rather expensive. And then, given just the overall fishing location, and the way of Jennings Bay, it's just a rather shallow bay, it's a lot of sediment that deposits through the, through Painter's Creek, so, you know, being on shore and being, you know, 20 or 50 feet out, really doesn't get you anywhere, so spend all that money on something like that, doesn't seem, you know, the cost benefit didn't seem to work on that one. But other than that, I think that kind of sums up, you know, the two meetings that we had with the neighbors, and then what's before you is a resolution with conditions that we And then, what's before you is a resolution with conditions that we accept the master plan for Gillespie Park. And this will just kind of help provide a foundation, and it's something that we will, we review, and it'll be ongoing, something that, you know, will take neighbors' comments. At both meetings, I invited them to come back if something's not working, because we want to make this park something, something special for the neighbors and for the residents of Minatrista. So, I'll open it up, and if David has any further comments, or has any questions, I can certainly help try to answer those from the two meetings.
Okay. Any questions from the council? I like the idea that the dock is not going in, because I think it could be a huge liability issue for the city, but, yeah. Comments?
How do you monitor the activity?
Well, I mean, like I said, I mean, it's going to be tough for, for us at the city, you know, we can use our public works department, they're out and about a lot, you know, I can certainly make site visits myself, but we're going to rely mostly on the neighbors. And I've told them that, you know, hey, you know, these are the avenues, you can convey your opinion, your, tell us if it's working, if it's not working. And I invited them to, I said, you know, you can certainly give me a call, you can look on our city website. You know, I try to get all these ways for them to, to give their opinion, you know, just to see, see how it's received, you know. It's, it's difficult when, when, you know, a park moves next to you, it's, it's one thing to move next to the park, if the other park moved next to you, it's, it's a little bit different. So, it's, it's a challenge to try to make everybody in the situation happy, but we believe we've started that here tonight and hope to keep going forward with that.
What kind of buffer are you planning on putting in? You have, have those two strips there?
Yeah, you know, it, it's something that we, we thought, maybe the neighbors in the north wanted more lilacs, but they just wanted the buffer extended. So, I mean, it's something that we're, we're going to work on, whether it's hedges, whether it's rows of, of evergreen trees or something like that, just something that'll give a natural break from what is private property and what is city park property.
Okay.
So, what? Excuse me, the one thing I kind of jumps out at me is the parking issue. Is that going to be no parking on both sides of the street?
Um, that is just on the, the park side. That was, this idea was kind of brought up when we first talked about parking in general there. The residents kind of stated that Western Drive, sometimes, you know, if you've got people parking on both sides of the road, can get rather narrow, and it can be difficult. So, what we decided to do, and it was purely going to be on a trial basis, and the Parks Commission actually requested that our first meeting in 2016, we'd look at this and ask the, the neighbors, ask the residents, how has this worked? Has it not worked? Has it achieved some sort of goal? And if it's not, we can certainly take those signs out, they're rather inexpensive to put in. But, yeah, right now, it's just on that one side of the road.
I'm assuming what's going to happen, looking at the aerial map, if somebody wants to drive, they're just going to park on the other side of the street.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's really not, we can't completely discourage it, but like I said, it's, it's our way at this time to, to attempt to remedy the situation, and try to get the neighbors that live close to utilize the park and walk and bike to it, you know. I know it's a city park, and everyone will be able to use it, and there will be plenty of parking in our spots, too.
And that was kind of my point, is, you know, it is a city park, so, you know, how do you, you, you need to park somewhere, and not everybody has the option to walk there. You know, I mean, there's maybe an issue of handicap, you know, how will we deal with that? So, I just don't want to have where people may park on that side of the street, now they end up parking on the west side, well, now you impact those neighbors more because that eliminates their parking. So, but, yeah, it'll be interesting to see how that works.
The residents were willing to, to give that trade-off, because there, those residents that, that live across the street, they utilize on-street parking when they have guests and such. So, that, that was the struggle, if you will, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, but this was the consensus of the input that was given to the Park Commission, is we've got to start somewhere. The intent, Bill's intent, how it's always been used, was the neighborhood. It was the neighborhood kids, and, and the neighborhood people that were using it, so...
Unfortunately, we, we don't have that option. It, it is a city park.
Well, absolutely, no, absolutely right.
We have to make it accessible to everyone.
This, believed to be by the Park Commission, to be the intent of, of what, it, it certainly still is a city park, you can't regulate who comes and goes, obviously, but felt that this was fitting with the intent to use of the park, passive, open space, green space for the city to use.
Maybe Ms. Thol would like to weigh in, she's the park liaison, do you want to add anything?
The parking issue, along with all of the other issues, were discussed quite extensively, and, and for, for the two different meetings, as Nick mentioned. And so, as Mr. Abel was stating, the reason for the parking on, on the park side is because if the, the signs were on the, on the other side of the street, then the guests of those residents wouldn't be able to park in front of their homes. So, so it was a trade-off, and it is a city park, but it's also really, you know, more of a neighborhood park, just like any of the smaller neighborhood parks in any of the other smaller parks in the other neighborhoods. Primarily will probably be used by the neighbors walking or biking to them, but available to anybody who would want to come, even non-Minatrista residents. So, it's a place to start with the parking.
Dave, refresh my memory here, could you please? Back in 2014, when we accepted, the city accepted the donation from Mr. Gillespie's property to turn it into a park, a couple of things stick in my mind, refresh my memory, would you please? One, if I recall, part of that condition was to have a handicap trail, do we want to call it, or a walkway?
No, that's not correct.
Does that do anything to you? And also a shelter.
No, that is, that is not correct. The conditions, the, there were really only two, two conditions the city had in accepting the park. It was one, that it be turned into a public park within one year of us receiving it.
I remember that.
The second was that a sign be located to, and it be named Gillespie Park. Those were the only conditions.
Okay, I remember that.
And then, a third condition being that we continue to use it as a public park. It had some definition as to what a public park means.
Okay, maybe that's where I picked it up, as far as the shelter.
And it just generally listed what a passive park, what uses could be used for that, but it did not specify we had to do any of those things.
Okay.
Also, Nick mentioned earlier a dock. The, the trust left Bill's dock to the city. We, though, at the time, said, well, thanks, but we can't use it, it's, it's a residential dock, can't be used for a public purpose. But, so they, they left the dock on the property for the city, but nowhere was there a condition that we, the city, had to put a dock in. It listed fishing as an example of a use for that park, but it is not a condition that we have to do a walkway, a pavilion.
Okay.
Any of those things. We've technically, we've got the sign, we haven't put the sign in the ground, but we, we've fulfilled our duty of turning it into a park. It is designated on our map as Gillespie Park. So, we've fulfilled our duty, we've turned it into a park, and we need to continue to use it as a park.
Okay. I just remember those discussions, that wasn't a requirement, it was just a suggestion.
Correct, just, just discussions, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? If none, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council regarding this matter? Okay. Otherwise, the Park Commission, as Ms. Thol stated, discussed this at length and is making a recommendation to approve, I believe it's in our packet, I have to get to the right page.
Page twenty-four.
Accepting the master, so this would be accepting the master plan for the Gillespie Park at fourteen twenty Westwood Drive. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the master plan as recommended by the Park Commission.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the master plan as recommended by the Park Commission for the Gillespie Park at fourteen twenty Westwood Drive. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none?
I think the process went really well, getting the neighbors involved, and good job.
Yeah, definitely good.
You got the block addressed on line three.
Oh, it says fourteen twenty, I'm sorry. Which, unlike, I can't see.
That, that's the license agreement for the Leonard property. He, they need to enter into a license agreement for the landscaping that encroaches on the city property.
Okay. Thank you. So, hearing none, hearing no other questions or comments, then, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Olson, good, good job. Next, we're approving bid for the Lisle Park Tennis Courts, another park, wonderful, this is great, great news, we're excited.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, this was a rebid from last year. Last year, I think our bids came in about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, mainly due to the construction market. If you recall, last year, we had a late summer with all the rain that occurred early on in the year. We received some high bids toward the end of the year. We did rebid this project and open bids. The bids ranged from two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars to three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The engineer's opinion of construction costs is two hundred and seventy-five thousand. I should point out that in the bid summary page, the third page, there are the engineer's estimate that's indicated on that page was from last year's project. We didn't, I didn't catch that, our admin staff had...
I was going to ask you, because there are two different figures, so, so the two forty-seven...
Right, so they used the summary sheet from the last one that didn't update the engineer's estimate, so I apologize for that. The engineer's estimate is two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And also, city staff has also revisited a grant, we received a one hundred thousand dollar grant, which also helps lower that, the city's portion of the project by that amount. With that grant, approximately forty percent of the construction costs are paid by that, by that grant. So, that's good. The, the bid received, the low bid is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars and ninety-five cents, and that was from, excuse me, I didn't put the name of the contract around that part of it, I'm reading. Northwest Asphalt. Northwest, I did contact them, they are also a experienced contractor in constructing tennis courts and the, obviously, the parking lots as well. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution accepting the bids received and awarding the project Northwest Asphalt for their low bid of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars and ninety-five cents.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Hornby, do we know if Northwest Asphalt has built a tennis court before, in addition to...
Yes, they, they have.
They have?
I, I did call to make sure they had experience in building tennis courts, they do have.
Okay, because we had that one resident state, not all tennis courts are the...
Created equal, yes.
Created equal, yes.
It's not rocket science or whatever it is.
But, can we also assume that our engineering firm will be overseeing the installation and making sure that it's done to specifications?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
Northwest has been, it's one of the oldest companies in the city, it's fifty-plus years old, they've been, been around a long time.
Now, before the council goes about to voting on this, I want to thank both Mr. Abel and Mr. Hornby for a job well done. They recommended to you last year, the last council, to reject the bids, that's tough to do sometimes, when people think they're going to get a tennis court, and then you say, oops, sorry, we're not. But, as they, as you heard, that the, the pricing is a lot better this year, and then Mr. Abel's work on the grant bought down a chunk of the total, so, job well done.
The, the grant is, is huge, and well done, kudos to you, Mr. Abel. Fantastic.
And Mr. Olson.
And Mr. Olson, thank, thank you very much, yeah, fantastic, and keep up the good work and apply for more.
Yeah, the one thing we did find out with the grant process over the last few years, it is important on how much you say as a city you're willing to contribute. I know we contributed a lesser amount and got rejected, and kind of came up to our ante, so to speak, and ended up getting it, so, you know, you spend a little bit more in the pocket to save a little bit, save even more on the other end, so, it's kind of worth it, so.
Great, well, good, thank you very much, and we're anxious to get going on this, I think. Do I have a motion to approve the bid in accepting the bids for the Lisle Park Tennis Courts, awarding it to Northwest Asphalt to, for two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars and ninety-five cents?
So hoped.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
There's motion and seconded to approve as stated. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we move on to approving our scope of services for the water treatment facilities. I believe that's Mr. Hornby.
Yes. Thank you. In your packet, there is a memo that explains what the, is it included in the scope of services in, in general, and then the scope of services is also attached for your review and comment. Also have a resolution that would approve the scope of services for the water treatment plant, request for proposals, and authorizing the preparation of the RFP and distribution qualified consultants. In the memo, the, on the first page, there is a reference to bidding and construction services for well number six and well number seven. I should let you know that has been designed, that was approved previously. This is for two wells along Kings Point Road, and the design is complete, those are actually sitting on the shelf. So, those wouldn't need to be in part of the scope of services, but it could be, so I, for your information, I included it, so you knew that that was already done. And then, one other item, talking to our staff, you could also, I know there was some discussion with the council at the last meeting about perhaps phasing a portion of the project. You could, and part of this would be in the initial, what we call the preliminary design, is to have the consultant that's awarded the contract do some preliminary review and make a recommendation on the timing for the water tower. You, we could let that go to 2017 or as late as 2020, depending on water use and the number of users that come online. So, that is something you could set off, you know, later, if you'd like to. But, of course, the other thing to keep in mind is that if history has been correct, prices generally go up over time, not down, so. But I just wanted to let you know that we did want to phase work, that is another item that could be pulled out, but perhaps that's something you want to wait until we have a consultant on board to determine that.
So, what you're saying is removing number three bidding and construction services for well number six and well number seven, because that's already more or less been done?
Correct. It's, it's been designed, it's sitting on the shelf, that could be bid at any time.
Okay. And then, the other question is, design bidding and construction service Hunter's Water Tower, could, could that be included, but have it be a separate line item, so we know what that would cost separate?
Correct, we could have them separate that out.
And then, we would know whether we want to go with it now, and, and then maybe, like you said, once you have the consultant on board, then they could tell us whether, when we might need it, whether it would be better to do it in conjunction with this project. I think a lot might play into it in terms of what the overall costs are going to be, what the finances and, and all of that might play into the fact, because I know water towers can be, you know, five to eight hundred thousand, somewhere in that range? Maybe more?
This one would hold. It, it's probably going to be somewhere in that million two to million five range.
Okay, all right, so we're talking a significant amount?
It's a significant investment, yes. And then, there's also is long-term maintenance. One of the things I'd like this consultant to look at, too, is options for ground storage, I mean, is underground storage.
Okay.
So, open space in a park, or, or in some other open space, putting an underground storage system in, because the, and I apologize, I should have just said park, but in some open space where you can have turf over the top, trails, and that, that type of thing, because it's a lot, it can be more cost-effective not to have the above-ground elevated tank. You have to come back every so many years and repaint a tank, and it gets quite pricey to do that, so, looking at underground storage, I like to look at, it's still likely going to have to be over in that Hunter's Crest area.
Okay.
That's one of the things I want them to look at in the first part of the scope, in that first thirty days, is a recommendation on the tank, or the storage as well.
But that's, I didn't, where would that, or where did you list that in your report?
I didn't, I didn't list that in the report specifically.
Because I think, then, wouldn't we want to list that?
We can identify that more clearly in the scope.
Questions? Anything else, Mr. Hornby?
Not unless you have any questions specific on the scope. Well, one thing that we should change, we did, there was some conversation with staff and, and a little earlier about maybe having the consultant attend up to two meetings per month, rather than one month, meeting per month.
Actually, I think it would be better to say, attend a meeting a month or as needed, so it's a little more open-ended. I don't want to put ourselves in a corner where we maybe need weekly meetings at the beginning, and then we only need monthly meetings afterwards. I, I think it would be better to say monthly meetings or as needed. So, it can go either way, it can go more or less.
I'm assuming that we're going to, looking at, is there a need for a tower in Hunter's Crest?
That's where, that's where it would be planned.
Right. Has that been looked at as far as future water treatment plants?
There's also would be, as part of the overall plan that was in your comp plan, in the future, there, there could be a water treatment plant out in that area as well, and a, and a well. So, you'd like to have enough land set aside to take care of all that.
Because usually, the, the three of them go hand in hand.
Correct.
Well, treatment, tower.
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure that if we put a tower there, that we have the land, and we have the need in that area for that.
Yeah, that, and that would be the goal, is to set aside half land to do that, so...
And so, currently, the water storage, whether it's above ground or below ground, whatever, would address the water pressure issues.
Correct. And the fire flow, and the, yes, and certainly provide that pressure out there.
Right.
If you recall, the issue with Hunter's Crest is that there's... If you recall, the issue with Hunter's Crest is that there's a, roughly a two and a half mile water main, uh, that serves that development.
Right.
And, um, providing sufficient fire flow has been the issue on drawing off water through that twelve-inch line over that length of time, uh, that length of pipe, uh, to adequately fight a fire. So my understanding through public safety is that if there is a fire call out there, uh, the fire department brings a reservoir out that they fill inside, yes.
Then would I also, we always say Hunter's Crest, but there's a, Turtle Creek is out there as well, so this would address any issues that they may have as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So just so I understand this, Paul, uh, for each area, so we're talking five different areas, by a decentralized system, we would be talking about five water treatment plants, one for each section?
We'd have a, overall on your comp plan, you would have a treatment plant in the north segment, and that would be independent until such time as development connected it to the central system.
Yeah, that'd be one.
You'd have a treatment plant in the southwest, which would be King's Point Road.
Two.
And the third one we have would be identified in Hunter's Crest.
That would be three.
Yep, there was a fourth as a possibility that was in the comp plan, but it likely is not needed, and it showed that fourth one, uh, near the central system. But it didn't specify, you know, you can build plants so that you can provide the capacity to get you up to that thirty-five hundred gallons per minute. That was identified in the comp plan update in twenty thou, two thousand and eleven, uh, but it was put in there as a contingency plan.
Yeah, I was looking at taking this to two thousand and thirteen, 'cause that we were talking about a centralized, so now when we go this direction on the north plan, I'm assuming that the north plant would take care of Red Oaks, the development in Red Oaks in that area.
Yeah, yes. So anything that comes out of that, that northern system would be served by that plant?
On that plant, okay.
Yep, and that, there is some discussion about looking at that and situating it so that if there is an opportunity with mound, at least your portion of mound, it would be expandable to do so with mound, so desired.
So initially, they were, we're talking three?
Well, initially, we're talking two.
Initially, you're talking two.
We're talking two.
Hunter's Crest being possibly three.
And then...
And the two would get you to the fifteen hundred gallons per minute that we were discussing with the central plant. So the, so the discussion that we had over the last couple of meetings, um, that was an apples-to-apples comparison with the capacity and the storage availability for the centralized plant. It was an apples-to-apples comparison of the two systems.
Thank you, I just wanted to be sure.
And then as, as a community continues to grow, especially since there's a lot of stage development areas down by Saint Bonnie or out by Saint Bonnie, then the city would have an option of adding that other plant at a future date.
Correct.
But the, the currents, the current two plants would be the fifteen total together, would be the fifteen hundred gallons per minute, and would, again, based on projections, um, be si, be sufficient to the, for the city for the twenty-thirty, approximately twenty-thirty timeline.
Correct.
Next fifteen, sixteen years. And that, that, as Mr. Hornby pointed out, that's the same as a centralized system. Now, the, um, northern system would also be built for expansion, potential down the future, and wouldn't the southern system also be planned for potential expansion?
We'd look at that on that site, on how we could configure that to get some expansion out of that as well.
You're right.
So we're gonna try to keep options open, and that's what I want them to look at in that first part of the scope.
Right.
Sure.
And if you were to go with the, uh, underground storage op, option in Hunter's Crest, that would provide enough pressure for fire purposes versus a water tower?
The idea behind a water tower is that that works off of gravity, so you put it up high enough to get the pressure that you want.
Right.
When you look at ground storage, underground storage, what you do is you use a, um, a series of variable speed pumps, so when there's demand, the pumps kick on and keep, keep that pressure in the system. So as, as there's more demand, those pumps run faster, turn more pumps on to keep that, to keep the system pressurized. So they're a little bit different animal, um, but they're, you know, there's some trade-offs, you have pumps that you have to rely on, you need backup generation, those kinda things, just like you would for a water treatment plant. But the other thing with the elevated tank is it can cost you a significant amount to repaint that every fifteen years, twenty years, so. There's some, I think there's some trade-offs there, I, I know that you, you know, and you also know from your existing tanks that you could potentially gain revenue from antenna sales and, or antenna mountings on the, antenna, on the towers too, so. It is a preference item, and it's, sometimes it's a little more difficult to put an elevated storage tank in an existing resident, or near an existing residential area, but, um, I think if we do a good PR job of letting people know that that tank would go there at, between a certain date, between twen, in this case, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, and make sure that's very visible, I think that that's, um, you know, you could, um...
But that's something we wouldn't have to decide on tonight, whether it's gonna be elevated or in-ground, and we could get more information on that and...
And that's the idea with, uh, with bringing a consultant on board, is just get, get their recommendation on that too.
So what we're gonna do is, um, go back to your bullet points, um, can't remember what page it was on. Okay, so on page thirty-one in our packet, uh, we're gonna, design building and construction services for the Northwest Water Treatment Plant, design bidding and construction services for the South Central Water Treatment Plant. We're going to take out the well, that one, and then, um, we're going to have the design bidding and construction services. We're gonna change that, if I understand you correctly, to say, um, consult on, help me out here.
Well, that, that next bullet, that which is be the fourth bullet with that as far is the connecting water main from the wells to the treatment plant.
I'm sorry, okay.
And from the south, the south system to the central system.
The fourth one, yes, the fourth one stays.
So that's the fourth one, so that's what that is.
It's the fifth one that, that we're looking at changing.
Great, the fifth one, we'll keep it in the scope, but we'll separate it and ask for a separate fee for that portion of it.
Okay, and they're...
And that way you can have that decision on whether you want to keep, move forward with that, at that, at this time, or if you want to postpone that or phase that in later.
Okay. Okay?
Uh, the resolutions, you should also note that the resolution does authorize staff to prepare the remainder of the RFP, and then also to distribute that to qualified consultants. And staff does recommend approving the resolution.
Okay. I'm just trying to get to it in my, in the right page here.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yep. Um, okay, so, any other questions, comments, otherwise?
Just one comment, I, a resident brought it to my attention, they kinda, through this process, um, they were a little concerned about that they had figured out that being we had paid, we had bought land out of the sewer and water fund, that is not gonna be used, and they were a little concerned about that, about why basically only half of the residents paid for this property that's now not gonna be used for, you know, the foreseeable future.
The, the land that you're talking about is, um, over here, it was purchased for three, out of three funds, if I'm correct?
The majority was purchased out of park dedication, and there was a, the previous, a previous council had set aside some funds to be used for potential, knowing that there'd be water and sewer improvements. I mean, at some point, you know, whether it's used now or later, you know, the council at any point, if they want, can reallocate the funds and call it all park and open space, but the, the, the plan that was discussed and I guess, you know, adopted, you know, back several years ago was that we knew there was gonna be some infrastructure improvements needed, so we parceled off a portion for, for sewer and water.
So if we wanna use it for parks, you know...
It's just a matter of paying it back.
We can, we can pay back the sewer and water fund. The other thing, um, that we've talked about is a campus, a master comprehensive plan for the, for the campus here, um, and maybe if we do that, that might give us a good idea as to what that land is gonna be used for. But the other thing we also had in mind, and I believe we used some funds, um, I'm not sure how it was worked, but we thought in terms of expanding the public works facility in the future too, so we need to keep that in mind. It may not happen now, it's not gonna happen ten years from now, but maybe, you know, in the foreseeable future anyway, we might have to expand public works too. So we do wanna keep some of that for, for public works or for some other use at some point, but, uh, your point is well made, and we can certainly look at the use of that.
And I would, and I guess one other point I'd make, I mean, the city's not really out anything by, I mean, we have land identified for both of these decentralized plants, I think we have the land in the south and central, and we basically just have to pick up where we left off with the school district, you know, last year, I mean, they were gonna offer that for free, hopefully that offer still stands, we just have to, you know, finalize, you know, that, um, so we're not expending any other money, at least, at least we weren't, you know, as of a year ago to, uh, to put these plants on, so.
If I could add something to this a second, Mark, um, I think, and I think I've heard the same, there's been so much discussion about going back and forth of the rates, the water rates, how much are my water rates gonna increase, you know, there've been discussions at many different meetings, they're gonna go up five percent, ten percent, twenty percent. And I think I heard the same thing, somebody said, well, wait a minute, didn't that land that we're talking about here, wasn't that paid for by the water fund account? And I wasn't here at the time, so I, I really don't know, but if that being the case, shouldn't that be paid back to the water fund to help keep our rates down, uh, with the new water treatment plants that we're putting in?
And that's what I...
Are we talking about the same thing?
I think that's what I was saying, is that we can have that discussion at some point, um, and it's a philosophical discussion, and we also have, not only do we have the land to the west of the city hall, but we also have land to the south, to the east of city hall, and so we wanna look at the big picture, the overall picture, and what the city wants to do with it in, in not only short term but long term, and I think the city, uh, the council should discuss that at some point and, and make a decision, and like I said, you know, the best thing to do is to have an overhaul, comprehensive...
I agree.
Big picture plan, and, because we don't have to do it tomorrow.
No, I agree.
But, but in the near...
You've probably heard the same thing about, you know...
In the near future.
Will that help keep the water rates down for the users that have it?
I don't know, we, we'd have to look, I think it was like three hundred and fifty thousand, I could be wrong, we'll have to look at the numbers, but, um, again, I think we need to have an overall comprehensive plan for, for this land that we have. And then once we have that in place, then we can decide what fund should pay for water and reallocated.
Yeah, we can reallocate it at any time, this was the best, best, you know, assumption made, we knew we needed to make some improvements, so what, we did the majority to park, 'cause if the, I mean, David could speak to this, I mean, it calls for a community master park or, you know, on this site, and then we portioned off a portion for water and sewer based on discussions we've had the last year, so we knew we needed water and sewer improvements.
Right, I'm sure you'd see the same thing, if you're a resident and you were paying for the city water, you'd like to look at, you know, are there ways to help me not raise my rates too high?
Sure, and absolutely, and I...
Yeah, and I think that's what we've all been doing the past year and a half, is sort of trying to make this thing the, the most cost-effective.
Right, that's just something that was thrown out.
And we're gonna, we're gonna look at that, but with that said, I've, I have talked with Mr. Abel regarding the overall, um, master plan for this, this compound here, if you will, and I really would like to see that happen, and I think it would be good to happen because then we know, and future councils kinda know what we had in mind, and currently we don't know that, so.
Okay.
But definitely we will take a look at that sooner than later.
'Cause I, I think what it was, this resident, um, 'cause I'd gotten the numbers from, from, from Brian, it was, uh, four, four hundred and fifty-five thousand of the water.
Four forty-five, yeah, four forty-five water, four forty-five sewer, and like one point five, some million out of park.
I think their, their point was, I know their point was, is couldn't we use that half a million or four hundred and forty thousand to pay for our water treatment plant? You know, it wouldn't that make more sense than sitting on some land that we may never, you know, and basically only half the residents of the city paid for it, you know, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's...
And we can look at that, I mean, not a, not a bad, I mean, I, I totally understand where you're coming from, and I think that would be something good to look at.
Yeah.
Definitely we'll do that. Great, yep. Okay, so with that, um, I'm looking for a resolution, a motion to approve the resolution for the scope of services for the water treatment facility and to authorize staff to go out for an RFP.
I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation to approve the resolution approving the scope of services and authorizing an RFP process.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Um, so Mr. Hornby, I think you have your, you know what we want?
Yes, and I'd pedal beyond the metal to try to move that schedule up.
Great, thank you. Um, approving our take-home vehicle policy?
Uh, that is me, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Council, you have in your packet tonight, a, uh, policy for approval, the policy is on a take-home vehicle provision for city staff that qualify. Um, when we promoted Mr. Peters back in January to the superintendent position, one of the things that we discussed at that point was to approve him to have a take-home vehicle. Um, we don't have, we didn't have one in place, um, and because of the fact that we actually have a couple of other city staff people in our public safety area that had a take-home vehicle and kinda were, I think it's been twenty years since they've been doing this, but, uh, we hadn't had a take-home vehicle to kinda document that process, so. So that was what the time was spent doing, is putting together the policy, um, Mr. Beatty put together the information that you see in that policy that's coming before you, that currently would include three city staff people, Mr. Peters, uh, Police Chief, or Director of Public Safety, and then whoever's in charge of investigations. And so those three people that, um, would, uh, qualify as having a take-home vehicle, and then as part of that, they would have to sign the acknowledgement form, which was included in the packet, that says they agreed to live by, live by and abide by the roles and responsibilities that go with having a take-home vehicle, so. Um, we felt it was, uh, good to wait a month to put the policy in and cover all the staff members that, that have, uh, this provision as part of their employment, instead of just doing, uh, Mr. Peters piecemeal and catching up with the police later, so. And I'll stand for any questions if you have any on this particular item.
Go ahead, Mr. Christians?
Yeah. Uh, as you probably know, all my project managers and lead carpenters all have company vehicles that are drive, and one of the things that we had to get a clarification on and make them aware of is our insurance carrier.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm assuming you've probably already looked at that?
Yep, uh, the, yes, uh, Mr. Christians and Council, um, the League of Minnesota Cities does have a provision that, that covers this, so, and the policy that was written allows us to offer this with the insurance coverage.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I just wanted to bring that up, 'cause we have to list all the people who are allowed to drive vehicles.
Right, and, yeah, we do too.
With our carrier, thank you.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the take-home vehicle policy as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the take-home vehicle policy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the take-home vehicle policy. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Next, we have our approval of the purchase of our sound system enhancements to council. As we know, okay, I'm not gonna make it, Bob.
I make a motion.
We had a bet that we're gonna be done by eight-ten, and I think I'm going to lose the bet, alright. Uh, we kind of have heard this, but go ahead, Mr. Veroni.
Yeah, at the request of council, and this is not a new, uh, request, believe me, um, we modified our, our, uh, council chambers back in twenty fourteen. What we didn't really include, 'cause it really wasn't an issue at the time, was the sound in here. Adjusting sound in here is, is a little different now that the, um, equipment isn't back in the, the back room. Our recordings are awesome, uh, that used to not be the case a number of years ago, but our recordings are fine. Um, what suffered because of that is the level of sound that we have to have in here, uh, in order to make sure that those recordings are fine, and so the council chambers essentially suffered with poor sound quality, and I think as you can hear, the, the, they're starting to crack, and, you know, they're old, let's put it that way, it was, it was old a year ago when we replaced it all and didn't touch those. So this, this, uh, equipment that we will purchase will essentially place four speakers kinda over our heads, shoot the sound towards the, uh, audience members. Uh, we might get a little hammy at sound, but in general, I know that, uh, folks here on the dais don't really have any trouble hearing us, it's just the folks in the audience trying to hear what we have to see because of the poor speakers. Right now, they're kinda aimed at each other, why they initially put them in that way, I'm not sure, but, uh, four speakers positioned over our heads would kinda wash the audience with sound, and so between that and the, and the accompanying items that will go in the back, um, the price was really pretty good at, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars, and, um, we had a four to three hundred dollar roughly balance left in the money of the fifty thousand tax-free, or tax, yeah, interest-free grant.
Capital grant, right?
Yeah, the capital grant that was, uh, utilized by us through MediaCom when we purchased the equipment, so, um, so there won't be any, uh, general fund dollars appropriated for this, so. And I'll stand for any questions on this particular item, but I think it's an item And I'll stand for any questions on this particular item, but I think it's an item that's a kinda last piece of the puzzle computer technology in this world.
Well, I know that in the past, um, several, especially the first several meetings here, uh, we had people saying, I can't hear, I can't hear. So it was somewhat of an issue.
Yeah, and the only other item that I did have a chance to talk with, I think, uh, the mayor, when she called me a little bit earlier this morning, was, uh, there's some information in here about electricians. And I did check with our vendor rep, uh, today and asked him, you know, if he could estimate those costs. And he thinks they're zero. He doesn't foresee that there's going to be any electrician needed for this. Uh, the work that they did back last year, they should be able to kinda install the stuff without the requirements that we could get an electrician, so. Um, so I don't think there's gonna be any additional cost beyond what you see in, in the, uh, the resolution for the purchase.
And if there are, it would be minimal and hopefully you could take care of that, cause I do think it's needed.
Yeah.
If this were approved, uh, do we have any idea on the completion date?
Well, uh, he said that it shouldn't take too long. The hardest part will be to order and get the materials. And I think, let's see, this is the second meeting in February. Uh, we should have it in for sure before the second meeting in March, maybe in the first week of March. Depends on how quickly they can get these, these items ordered. And I can't order them until I get your approval, so I told him I would be emailing him or calling him to try to, to get that ordered, please, so. But I think that's, that's the bigger timeline, so.
Okay. So, any other questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the sound system enhancements to the city council chambers.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And next, we have one more item that we added, and that's our online billing payments. We did discuss this, uh, had a lengthy discussion at our work session. Staff, if you could just briefly overview quick and tell us what you need from us.
Sure. Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. So the crux of the discussion was, um, implementing a system for taking, to start, uh, taking online utility payments. So, um, we've had, uh, requests from residents over the years to do that. Right now, we, we do, uh, ACH where they can do avoided check and, and we can draw it that way. But, uh, this would expand that service. Um, we talked, um, in the work session as far as the city absorbing those costs. We estimated annually, that'd be about two thousand dollars a year, but that would be the gross. And then there'd be savings as far as, you know, postage and staff time, et cetera. Um, so I think we're looking at, uh, uh, with the council's blessing and a motion, you know, starting with that phase of the, um, e-commerce type, uh, type items first. And then looking into, uh, maybe later in the year, once we got that up and running, the, uh, looking at just taking city credit cards up front and expanding that potentially to, uh, to building permits. But that would be a, uh, subsequent discussion and that, um, those fees would maybe then be, you know, in turn paid by the contractors and such. But right now, we wanted to focus on getting a timeline for getting these online payments, going for the utility billing, seeing those go out quarterly in our more frequent transactions, et cetera. So, uh, we would, if, with the council's, um, with a motion to that effect, we'd get going on that as soon as possible. Uh, hopefully in the next several weeks here. We have our audit coming up here as, in the finance department in the next couple of weeks. So we got a little, a few timelines, but we'd try to get, incorporate that as, as soon as possible. So, so we could, uh, get that service offered to residents, so.
Okay, is there a motion? Um, any further questions, discussion? Otherwise, um, is there a motion to authorize, uh, staff to pursue the online billing, um-
For just the utility payments?
Yeah, for utilities.
Are we gonna do, if you do E, E-payment, do you have to do E-billing?
Oh, yeah, I think that, that seemed to be the consensus of the council potentially. I'd at least look into that, yeah, that if the, uh, resident requests that they wanna be able to make online payments, that they would also receive an electronic billing, and that would help offset some of the, uh, the postage and the, and the fees, so.
The only, can I just make one comment? Maybe just to roll, rolling it out, we wanna not make that a requirement. You know, let's just roll that out and say, if you wanna make your online, if you wanna do an online billing, you can. And then at some point down the road, we can say, you know, what we're doing is converting, trying to convert people to E-payments and E-billing. Cause don't you think it might dissuade some people from?
Well, I'm assuming this would be an incentive for them to do E, E-billing.
Okay.
Or be E-payment, then the E-billing goes with it. So there's a cost savings to the city, so you kinda do it all at one time. I mean, I think what happens is you do one and you kinda forget about the other part. You know, I, I don't know, that's just why, is, is you kinda kill two birds with one stone. It's done, you don't have to deal with it again.
Sure. Uh, staff, me?
We're, uh, we'd be fine with, with doing that if, if council would like to sort of tie that together. I mean, I, I think I'm fine either way, but maybe that's a way to, uh, I guess, incentivize.
I think we can ask the vendor, you know, kinda what's standard operating procedure on this and what they've seen working out.
Cause the only thing I can think of is, once the platform's out there on the website, how that is tied together, that we, like, if people can just go in and log into our website and pay, does that, you know, we'd have to almost maybe physically match it up in the billing department, are you getting an E-bill or not? And how to, we, we might just have to flush that out a little bit. Um, I see what you're saying as far as that makes sense. And hopefully, most people, if they were paying online, would be, uh, sorta green. Or what, you know, someone's gonna go green type thing or whatever, and also would get an E-bill, so. But logistics, it just, yeah, whether that's a one-to-one tie, we can, yeah.
Yeah, and we can work that out, yeah.
Maybe we can work out those details, cause I mean, it's not gonna happen by, in two weeks or whatever, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but we, the, yeah, the main thing was just to get this rolling, make sure the council was supportive of that. And then hopefully, uh, I'll continue to coordinate with the, uh, with the vendor and, uh, staff to, uh, move this forward, so.
Okay. Okay, so, wanna move forward? Then I need a motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve staff to, um, execute E-payments.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. And we'll work out those details, cause it's not gonna happen-
Overnight, no.
Overnight. Um, next, we have our, um, council reports. I'll try and be brief. Uh, Ms. Thol and I- I'm sorry.
I think just the administrative-
No, we're not gonna approve the claims. All right, we need to approve the claims. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I make a motion that we approve the claims.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further, any questions?
I might have one question.
Okay.
Mr. Miller.
That's okay.
I'll post it.
All right.
It's a question mark. Uh, Trista Day trees.
That's maybe David Abel?
Yeah, I can take that or David, or, or basically, we went ahead, we've got the trees pre-ordered and ready to go for Trista Day. So it's just, we, we charged them on our, on the city credit card and they're ready to go. So that's, we, they, they're not here sitting there waiting to freeze or whatever, yeah. So.
What it is, during, during Trista Days, the Park Commission has always handed out little trees. Just as a little something encouragement to, to go green and, and be environmentally sensitive.
No, I can see your point, yes. We're, we're basically, we've ordered them now, but they'll show up here in a, in a few months or whatever, so. In May, basically.
Any other questions? Otherwise, um, motion has been made and seconded to approve the claims. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, I can do my report real quick. Um, Ms. Thol and I, along with, uh, some, um, Mr. Barone and Mr. Grimm, we, uh, we had a personnel committee meeting. I'll let them, um, talk more about that. Um, I also attended the Northwest League and had the, um, pleasure of meeting our brand-new Chair for the Met Council. And I also asked, uh, typically, Katie Rodriguez has been attending, and she is the rep for kinda the northern section. And I asked if we could have the rep for our section attend one of these meetings. I have not met that individual, and I'm sure none of you have, because I don't think that individual has been at a council meeting ever. And the other thing I'd like to do is maybe invite her, I think it's a lady, uh, to attend one of our council meetings, so we can have some, just, um, just some interaction with her. Uh, and also, uh, tomorrow, I will be attending a tour of the Hennepin County nine-one-one center at four-thirty. I sent out an email if anybody was interested in joining us. If anybody is, it's at four-thirty at the, um, new facilities. And for now, I think that's all I have. Ms. Thol?
Um, we had a Parks Commission meeting this past week, or the recent meeting anyway, where we, the, uh, master plan was presented this evening. Lengthy discussion, like I said, on, on many of those items. Um, and then, uh, we also discussed the Tree Replacement and Environmental Enhancement Fund, where there are two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars available to put trees in. It's, um, uh, funds that are available as a result of the Red Oak and Orchard Cove development. And, um, one of the thoughts on the allocation of some of those funds is to complete the evergreen trees along one-ten there where the townhouses are. The evergreen trees go along and then they stop. And, um, there's some uncertainty exactly as, as far as why that ended with the one-ten construction or the develop, or that sort of thing, but that's one consideration. And then, uh, just, uh, having, I think the go-forward was to have Gary Peters, uh, come up with a, some recommendations since he is out there and would know if there's any parks where trees have died or been removed or gotten lost to a storm, that sort of thing. And, um, uh, oh, and then there was one person on the commission that suggested, uh, that, yeah, a way to differentiate Minatrista, since we don't have a downtown, would be at any, you know, intersections where you enter Minatrista or along the roads to have some sort of signage or some trees and that sort of thing that was kind, um, made it unique to Minatrista. And, uh, I will be attending the newly-elected officials conference in Alexandria this weekend because I was unable to attend the one that was, uh, I was out of town during the one that was here locally. That's all I got. Mr. Vanderlinde?
I have none.
Um, the Pioneer Sarah Creek meeting has been moved from the nineteenth to March fourth. And, um, I will be attending, I think Lisa-
I'll, I'll probably attend too, sure.
Um, so we will keep you posted on that. And I met, uh, with the board members of, uh, the Spirit of the Lakes. And wonderful people, Kristen and John.
Bisi.
And I don't know if you've met them, but they're very well-connected within the community.
Longtime realtors.
Yeah, they're wonderful people. And the, uh, event is gonna be July sixteenth through the eighteenth. And last year, we did participate in the sponsorship. It was a thousand dollars. And that sponsorship is the same amount this year. And they're asking if we would like to do that. And along with the sponsorship, um, we get a parade unit, so they call it. One to two vehicles, um, a business showcase booth, um, which I think we should take advantage of. I don't know if we did it last year?
We did not. I think we kinda jumped in kinda late on the Spirit of the Lakes sponsorship. We got in a time in order to be included in the stuff, but not enough time to prepare to do that. So, you know, I, if you're in favor of it, we are as well.
Well, I think-
We'll help you guys do what you'd like to do with them, so.
They have a business showcase booth that is set up and it's, uh, you know, a lot of the businesses and, and so forth are there too. Like, uh, Our Lady usually has a booth there, uh, some of the schools and stuff. It's, I think it's very well-done, yeah.
But they said if we did not want to do it as a council, um, or just, uh, staff, we can donate it to possibly the engineer, um, that would be doing our water treatment plant. Um, and maybe split the time and not have just them there for that chunk of time. It's from like eleven to six. And maybe do like-
For one day.
For one day, Saturday only from youth. Uh, and then take another chunk of time and give it to maybe the people building, you know, some of the new development areas. So, just a thought, I'd hate to see us waste, um, the booth, being we paid for it. So I would highly recommend that. Uh, and also, uh, we get, uh, featured on the website. There's fifteen thousand flyers, event program, uh, some buttons that you get discounts on and, uh, all those little goodies. Um, regarding the parade, this is pretty cool. We can be in the parade with cars and they recommend that we have candy, which is cool. And we can't throw it, toss it gently. Or, this is even cooler. They said if you walk, um, it's kinda cool, cause you can, you know, hand the candy out then. But we could get some kids, and I think maybe DECA would volunteer. They could wear their DECA t-shirts or something, and they would maybe come along with us and hand out candy and walk along, um, our car vehicles while we're doing it. So, just a thought. It wouldn't have to be DECA. It could be any organization that wants to expose themselves. Girl Scouts would be a cool one. Uh, Boy Scouts are always looking for ways to draw kids into different programs. So just a thought, and if you, if this is the right protocol, I would be more than happy to communicate that to the community education, uh, person Joel, I did, Dahl.
Joel Dahl, yep.
And ask him if he would recommend different groups that would be willing to do this with us. Um, and I think we could get some volunteers. I think it's, you know, cool to be in a parade. Uh, so that's my suggestion on that. Um, those are the big things. So they don't need the money right away, um, and, uh, I would probably do it pretty quick cause you get then the guaranteed slots with the programs and all that.
Sure. Would, um, would it be, uh, maybe a good idea to have that under, if the council's in agreement with that, consent agenda for that expenditure?
Sure.
Um, at our next meeting? So put it under consent agenda?
What was the cost to you?
Thousand dollars. Which is pretty normal, for me to be like that.
Yeah, parade, show booth, showcase. You're also shown on the stage.
Well, this, um, this falls right in line with, um, when I was at the conference, uh, the citizens' engagement and civic engagement and, and just being out there and communicating and networking and all of that. So I think it's a great thing, um, an opportunity to, uh, uh, talk to people, have people talk to us, uh, you know, all of that. So, great, great opportunity. So wonderful. So just, uh, put that on the consent agenda then. Okay?
And Bob, you've mentioned numerous times about the importance of networking or us as council members out there networking. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to show unity too.
And collaboration, collaboration, especially if we can get this, uh, some school kids to participate. That shows collaborating with other organizations. Um, great, great opportunity.
No, it's, it's good. In fact, last year, as you know, we participated. It was done a little different last year. Last year, the council members donated the money, if I recall. But in either case, uh, it's very, very important because to be part of a development of the Westhaka, you've got so many things. I don't know if you've ever been to the parade or not and watched the parade, uh, and the event that takes by Surtside Park or whatever. It's, it's, it's well-done and it's a great opportunity for networking, yeah. So I'm, I'm all in. I've been all-in with that thing for ten years. I'm all-in.
Um, great. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Christians?
The only thing I have is very, very s- short. Uh, Thursday night, uh, I'll be attending at St. Bonnie, the Fire, uh, Fire Advisory Board meeting, which will be at St. Bonnie, uh, Thursday night. And then, uh, don't forget, Saturday, March seventh is the Moonlight Parade. So it'll be an opportunity also to network there if you wanna do a little exercise and walk the Moonlight Trail. I know, Patricia, you're gonna wanna go.
I know I do wanna go. I've realized I'm gonna be out of town, so. Do they have snow showing?
You'll enjoy it. Providing it's not too cold.
With that, I'm gonna move to staff reports. Mr. Barone?
Yep, I just have a few items, uh, Mayor and Council, just a, a short update on kinda where we are in so many HR-related things. Um, we're kinda getting into the final stages of trying to hire a public works maintenance worker and a city clerk. I will probably have, uh, something on the council agenda for approval conditional offers, that kinda thing, for, at the March second meeting, which I'll talk about here in a second. Uh, we've also, uh, the, the application period closed for the building official, and we begin, uh, the initial round of interviews this week. Mr. Abel and I will be conducting those interviews. Um, we didn't get a ton of candidates for the building official. I think we have eleven, but we totaled, but we got some really good candidates, so we're gonna have a tough decision, so. Um, yeah, as we roll through it, so. Um, as the mayor, uh, mentioned, we did have Personnel Committee meeting on the eleventh of this month. Um, we talked about these items, kinda where we are, and that's why we're updating you tonight. Um, also talked about, um, labor negotiations and strategies. Don't wanna give away too much. I got Mr. (laughing). Mr. Kokish down, he's, you know, during the labor negotiations on the other side of the table. It's all very amicable, so. Um, we did have good meetings with both our, uh, police unions, both the supervisors. We're, uh, Sergeant Kokish is participating and then the police officers. And I think we're gonna have a, another council, or council meeting, Personnel Committee meeting this week and probably one the following week as well, as we start working through these things and try to, uh, knock off, um, both labor negotiations and the staffing-related items, so. Very encouraged by where we are with our staffing. Uh, like I said, I'll hopefully have more for you on- Very encouraged by where we are with our staffing. Uh, like I said, I'll hopefully have more for you on March second. And speaking of March second, my materials would be in the um, packet. I will not be here. I'll be on vacation that week. Mr. Grimm will slide one seat over and handle that meeting that night. But uh, as I answered a little earlier, um, you don't need me here. We got very able people here that can step in. We don't have to stop things, including staffing, so, um, just because I'm not here, we will have those things on the meeting. We're just gonna keep moving forward on this stuff, so. I'll stand for any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I'll just turn it over to, uh, Mr. Abel here for his update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, bringing up something that you may have seen recently in the, in the news. Uh, many communities have been contacted about installing large solar fields. Um, there's a lot of interest in this because of recent creation of a Minnesota Solar Garden Program by the state legislature. So, you have what, what are called solar developers essentially, who are going around to community to community, trying to see if there's interest in putting these types of uh, solar developments within their community. So, there's, there's a couple of different things uh, to consider. One is, is from an ordinance standpoint, is, is that something the city wants to go down that path of? Um, and more specifically, the reason I bring it up tonight is we, the city, have been contacted by a solar developer, um, asking if we, the city, are interested. Um, they, they were made aware that we have property around City Hall. Um, this was brought up earlier.
One of the reasons.
About developing a, a, a master plan. Um, and so that was the specific um, request or inquiry I, I received from a solar company about whether or not the city would be interested in, in exploring that option. Uh, so I, I bring it up not to get into a lengthy discussion with you this evening, but to make you aware of it and, um, seeking um, some direction specifically to this uh, request, if there's interest, so I can uh, get back to this company. Um, and then, uh, further, what we have to discuss on a more global level, on a city level, is do we wanna take a look at our ordinances to allow for this sort of uh, use in our city? Currently, our ordinance, we, we allow them on structures. So, if someone wants to put a solar panel on the roof of their home or their shed, um, they can do so. Um, but we don't allow freestanding uh, solar panels that would be attached to the ground. We, we currently don't allow that in our ordinance. So, um, more specifically, like I said tonight, what I'm looking for is there, is there interest to explore the idea of that with the City Hall site or other city property? Could, could be considered as well. Doesn't have to be necessarily here, but um, that, that was the inquiry that was received by the city.
And obviously, the uh, strategy here by the solar companies is they're looking for, as David mentioned, public land. They wouldn't have to buy it. Um, it would be kind of a trade-off. We would put in a solar field, I don't know if that's what they call it, that's what I'm gonna call it, ten years or fifteen years. We would get some income, twenty years.
Twenty, twenty.
We would get some sort of income off of it. Is our community park gonna be developed during that time?
Maybe.
Maybe not. You know, again, that's, I think, what Mayor Whalen was talking about a little earlier tonight. We, maybe a little premature for us to get back to them and say yes, but um, you know, without knowing where, what the overall plan is for city-owned property on our campus site.
Well, and that kinda ties into what we were saying before. Um, I know, again, it was more or less the, the property west of here was kinda designated for utilities. And we even talked about, you know, like wind solar or whatever. So, I think we should look into it, definitely look into it, in my opinion. Um, because if it can generate some income, let's say, for instance, and I'm not saying we're gonna do this, but for instance, if we did put it on that property and it's designated water property, maybe the income from that can offset the, the cost of, you know, the water treatment plant or something like that. Those are just.
Or you could use the money and bankroll it and wait for the construction of your park someday.
Exactly. But, I mean, I think we need to look at it. Um, I don't, I think it's, it may be a good opportunity. It might be um, you know, so I think we need more, more information.
Yeah.
But we'd also wanna uh, find out how much we can make and what it requires. But I also think it's, it's a good idea to offer the option to our residents too. So, if we need to look at our ordinances, I mean, obviously, most of our, a lot of our residents aren't going to do it because they have smaller lots, but if you have a farm field that you would like to do this in, maybe it's an option. You know, I mean, I, it's, it's green, it's, it's good. It could be a moneymaker for people. I think it could help our residents.
I think worth looking into.
So, maybe have them bring back an ordinance or start looking at an ordinance and.
Yeah, I can, this gives me enough, I, in a general sense, that I can get more information from the company and just wanted to know if it was worthy of having a future agenda item. Where we're, there's, there's a lot that will go into this, obviously.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's enough for me to go off and bring back more information at a future meeting, absolutely.
Well, and about a year ago, when I was on the planning commission, Mr. Abel brought this topic up, because um, it, it was starting to become more popular, not prevalent yet maybe, but more popular. Other cities were starting to uh, address this issue. So, the question was, do we be proactive and, and change the ordinance, or do we just kinda sit tight for now? And we decided to sit tight, and now it's um, uh, this, this opportunity for the city. It, it could be a viable option. I mean, it sounds like if it could help supplement some of the, the payment for the water treatment, or if it's here and positioned, so it's not uh, an eyesore. But then the, the other piece to that is the residential piece, where if you've got ten acres or something, that's one thing. But you're, and uh, but if you're the house next door to the house that wants to have one in their yard, that's a whole different uh, situation, so. Um, but it sounds like we're there and, and time to uh, explore things a little bit further, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, this is similar to our, we several years ago did adopt an ordinance for wind turbines. Um, similarly, it's, it's when you get into residential, even though it's agricultural, like people do live, live out there, and even though they're ten acres, these things are big.
They make a lot of money.
So, it, it was a very lengthy uh, discussion and an ordinance that took time. And I, I anticipate if we do go down this path, this is going to take time as well. Certainly, though, uh, seems to be interesting to go ahead and move forward that direction, so.
And I just wanted to make one other comment, in that one of the things that we use as a guide is our mission statement. And it says, "The city of Minutrista will deliver quality services in a cost-effective and innovative manner." So, if this, if it were such that it could reduce the, uh, the increase of the water fees, and it's certainly innovative, so um, it sounds like it's worth exploring.
Are, are they limited to what they're looking at is, is ground-mounted panels? Or are they open to, I mean, we have, we've got a lot of buildings and we'll have more in the future. I mean, are they, are, is that part of what they're looking for, or are they strictly after ground-mounted units?
Ground-mounted units. I mean, you're, you're, these aren't, yeah, these are fields.
These are fields. I mean, it's not just a few units.
This is not one or two solar panels. This is rows and row and row of solar panels.
Right, in California, they've got a lot of them.
Yeah.
Like I say, I'm just looking at, is there other options? Were they looking for other places to, you know?
Yeah, I um, yeah, I certainly can ask them. The documentation I've gotten so far, um, you know, just pictures of people in Calif- exactly, we were talking about California, where I mean, they're, they're even bigger acreages than what we have here that they're, that they're looking at. But um, you know, the invest, they, they wanna get return on their investment of putting these things in. That's why it's about a twenty to twenty-five year program. And they need to put enough in to make sure they'll get a return on it, so. Um, I can certainly ask if buildings are options.
Yeah, it'd just be interesting, as long as we're getting some information on it. And see where, where this thing may lead to, if this is where, if this is all they're interested in, or.
Sure.
And just one other comment. Um, uh, there was a feature in the last four weeks or six weeks on one of the local TV uh, newscasts, where they were saying how the electrical company is giving promotions for people who do some, some type of solar panel on their home or whatever. So, I can certainly see in the next year us getting uh, the requests or inquiries from residents increasing.
Okay. Any other reports?
I don't believe so, Mayor. I think that's all we have.
Okay, with that, then uh, we can be adjourned. Only a half hour late. I'm sorry, who had, who's, um, who seconded? A mark, okay. Mr. Christians made the motion and Mr. Vanderlinde seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Like I said, only half hour be on by.
She lost.
I, I would, but you know, we didn't bet any amount, see?